How are you? How are you doing? What happened there, Ross? I thought we went, thank you. You got everything. You got down to pick it up. That's very good. Good morning, Carol. Bishop.
Okay. All right. All right. And this is the way you can set up. He does okay. And he said we need those.
To our friends on Zoom, we hope it's starting shortly. We will be attending in the process of police collaboration. Yeah. Alicia, would you please use setting silent so we hear it as quickly as possible? So I'm just. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Greenberg Public Library. This beautiful library that serves the entire town of Greenberg. This is the third of the series of meetings that has been held by the saving Greenberg Coalition to educate the Greenberg community about the effect of incorporation of the Edgemont section on the remainder of the town. We're going to address the structure of the town, the steps involved in doing an incorporation, the effects that incorporation will have on the town. We'll discuss what's wrong with the current process and then we will discuss what we're trying to do to improve that process. I welcome all of you here in person and everyone who's watching us online. Thank you so much for joining us this morning. In order to make sure that everyone understands the presentation, we will be taking questions throughout the program. If you need a minute to party, write it down, that would be fine. We'll also have a roaming microphone that you can ask your questions from your seat. If you're on Zoom and you have a question, please put it in the chat box and we will try to address that. We ask everyone to sign in so that we can have your contact information if you're interested in working with us for the cause. We would be more than happy to have you join our coalition. So first, I'd like to talk about what is the current structure of Greenberg. Westchester as a county is divided into towns, villages, and cities. Greenberg is one of the towns in Greenberg, but we have seven parts. Greenberg extends from Yonkers all the way north to Mount Pleasant and from the Hudson River east to White Plains and Scarsdale. A village is a part of town formed by a legal process called incorporation. Greenberg has six villages and the remainder of the area is called the unincorporated area. Our villages were formed between 1873 and 1910, back when Westchester was largely farmland and people needed to get services such as police, fire, and sanitation. The law that describes how villages are formed and how they are to be run was written by the state legislature in 1897. Four of our villages are the river towns, Dobbs Ferry, Hastings, Burlington, and Tarrytown, which obviously lie along the Hudson River. Number five is Bardley, which is adjacent to Dobbs Ferry, and number six is Owensbury, which sits smack in the middle of the unincorporated area. Each of these villages has their own government, their own police, fire, sanitation, recreation, and schools. They raise their own taxes and they pay a tiny amount to the overall town for administrative services. The entire town of Greenberg, including the villages, is roughly 95,000 people and half of people live in the Sitzville Chieses. That leaves about 45,000 people that live in the unincorporated area. Of those 45, there are only 7,000 that live in the Edgemont section, which is the smaller area that's nestled between Bardley and Scarsdale. In fact, Edgemont shares the post office with part of Scarsdale and their addresses are Scarsdale addresses. So why am I giving you all this detail? Because I want you to understand that everyone in the entire town gets to vote for our town's supervisor and our council members, who collectively form the town board. But these officials, in fact, only govern over half of the population of the town. So our village neighbors already have tremendous input in determining who governs us. Needless to say, our needs are not their primary concern. Should Edgemont become the seventh village, the government of our unincorporated town will effectively be chosen by 60% of the population who reside in the villages, not those of us in the unincorporated area. As the law regarding formation of villages is currently written, only the people who live in Edgemont can vote on whether or not to form a new village in Edgemont. The remaining 40,000 of us are not eligible to vote in such an election. We would have no say in a process that would give the villages the majority voice in electing our town government, thus controlling the decisions that affect our town and our lives. We would have no say in a process that would result in the loss of nearly $18 million in tax revenues and fees. That would devastate our town budget and the services that the town provides to us. This library being one of those services. We want you to know what would happen to our town if Edgemont falls into the village. We want you to know why we believe that the law must be changed so that everyone who's affected must have a vote on that. We want you to realize that as the law is currently written, a very small segment of our town has the ability to destroy the budget and the way of life of the larger part of the town. Our coalition believes that no one should have the legal right to destroy the government entity that bears responsibility for the well-being of this population. With that said, I'd like to introduce the members of the coalition who are here. Starting in the back, Alicia Ford from Parkway Homes Civic Association. Bishop Wilbert Preston in the back on the camera at Zoom, who is the pastor of Price Temple. To my right in front, Hugh McCauley, who is a member of the Veterans Advisory Commission in town. Manny Arizes from Juniper Hills Civic Association. Lloyd Court from Parkway Homes Civic Association. Lloyd Newlin, who's a former member of the.
Harvard.
Harvard.
Guardians.
Harvard.
Guardians.
Forgive me. Lloyd Court, who is a former president of the Board of Education for Greenberg Century VII. Hugh McCauley, who is a resident of Edgemont and who's been very active in the past many years, trying to educate community about what's been going on as far as incorporation. As I'm recognizing you. I'm sorry. Mike Schwartz, who is the resident of the Edgemont. I'd also like to recognize Dave Warner, who is a member of the Board of Education currently and past president of the Board. And I'd like to acknowledge Bill Grennwald, who is an attorney in Hartsdale, who's been active on the incorporation issue for many years. Okay. I think I've given all of them. Okay. And I am Carol Hammond. I'm a resident of Hartsdale. All right. Are there any questions so far about the information that I've given? Structure of the town, election policies. Okay, very good. So the next thing we'd like to inform you is how does the process for incorporation work? And is Greenberg incorporated or not? No, Greenberg is not, but the villages are. So in order to incorporate someone in the area that we just to incorporate, must start a petition, getting signatures from a certain number of people who live in that area. Currently, the law says only 500 people have to be in an area to incorporate, and the number of signatures is governed by the population. That petition then gets submitted to the town supervisor, who at this time is Paul Finer. The supervisor has to review the petition and within 30 days, he has to hold a hearing to hear any objections to incorporation. Once that hearing is started, it must be included within 10 days. Once the hearing has been included, the supervisor then has an additional 10 days to make a determination if the petition is sufficient. If it is sufficient, then a vote would have to be held. If it is deemed not sufficient, then somebody is going to file an appeal going through the courts to challenge the supervisor's decision. That appeal must be made within 20 days, but the court sets its own calendar. So the amount of time that it takes in order to get the hearing and the court decision depends upon the court. Once the court decision is rendered, it may of course be another appeal if one of the parties is not happy with the outcome, but when the court appeals are finally exhausted, a vote then has to be held within 25 days. So the process could be as short as 90 days, but it could drag on much longer than that based upon what happens. Greenberg is currently unincorporated because there's been no need for us to incorporate all of the services that would be divided by forming a village we already perceive in our unincorporated form. If we were to incorporate, that would be one way of preventing a future attempt at accession from the town by any of the citizens of town, but it would be an expensive process that really would not be of much benefit to the town, to the state, to their function. So I'd like to ask Mike Schwartz to come to the mic now to talk about what would be the effect of being in Edgemont incorporated.
Good morning, everybody. So I think what we need to take a look at first, why are we all concerned? What does it mean? Certainly, there are social issues which are involved. If you do a village and a small unincorporated Greenberg happened, that occurred and there was incorporation event, each of the two communities would be less diverse. The culture of our community would change dramatically. However, the larger issue for us is financial. Towns like Greenberg get their money from two different parts. The first part of the real estate tax, property tax, that everybody owns a property and all the commercial buildings pay. And the second one are all the fees and charges, building department charges, what you pay when you go to the pool, if you come in and you take a class at the library and pay $5, all of those fees get together.
There's no fees at the library to pay money.
Like I said, if you go to the parks department, then you might think.
There's a director and there are no fees.
Because I swear to you, I've never paid at the library.
Thank you.
I've. So those are the two packages. Edgemont has a measurable property tax base of around $14.5 million. They project approximately $3.5 million worth of those fees. So on the day they incorporate, the town is responsible to front them $18 million. And that $18 million leaves the budget of Greenberg. What you have to understand is taxes are determined by the value of the property. So because there are more expensive homes in Edgemont than I'm an Edgemont resident, because there are more expensive homes in Edgemont, their percentage is larger per capita than in other areas of unincorporating. So this $18 million is an enormous thing. $2 million of the $18 million will come back because they have to pay, Edgemont would have to pay, where their percentage of bonds, which have already been sold by the town during the time they were part of the incorporated town. So now we're looking at $16 million. If possible, Edgemont might buy services, which would defray that cost. Clearly, if $16 million left the town, and it's a possibility, if not immediately, over the long term, that the town would be bankrupt. If a smaller amount were lost, the town could survive, but what would that mean? Would it mean that the library would be closed on Monday or Tuesday? Is the library open on Monday, Tuesday?
Yes.
Would the library be closed on Monday and Tuesday? Would the pool be closed on Wednesday? Would you not get recycling pickup? Would you have to pay for your trash? Certainly, your property taxes would increase. The level of your services would diminish. And your overall quality of life as a resident of Greenberg would change. So the biggest piece of this for me is that the law exists with no representation for anybody who lives in the unincorporated town. 48,000 approximate people, around 8,000 approximate people in Edgemont, 40,000 to 8,000. You would think that the majority should get some consideration, but there's not. So the law now states that anybody can do anything that they want for the most part. You want to incorporate, that's fine. It doesn't matter what the effect will be on those left behind. And we'll talk about legislation that's in place today and legislation that will occur hopefully in the future, a little bit later on. But that's where we're at, looking at potential increases in property tax, potential diminution of services. And that's an enormous hit to a community that's still really difficult COVID, a difficult job market, and inflation. Any questions on the financial aspects? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. So what is wrong with the current process? Two major flaws. No consideration of the effect of incorporation on the existing unincorporated town. And if the incorporation is detrimental, there's no mechanism to make sure that the town doesn't suffer. The second is that the entire population that is involved, the residents of the entire town, have no say in a process that would significantly impact them. That is unhuman matter. We would have no say in our future. So what can be done to change the current process? What has our coalition done? We started organizing in January of this year for the purpose of asking our state legislators to make a change in state law so that all Greenberg residents would be able to vote in a referendum, because we believe that everyone who's affected by the proposed incorporation should be eager to vote. We asked our town board to pass a resolution asking our state legislators for a home rule to village law to allow all eligible voters in unincorporated town to vote on a referendum. This resolution was passed by the town board on February 8th. We then reached out to our legislators, Senator Andrew Stewart-Cousins and Assembly Member Mary Jane Shinsky in early February, asking to meet with them to present our case for making the change. I'd like to point out that Alyssa Jacobs from Assemblywoman Shinsky's office has joined us this morning. Thank you so much for coming. We also asked Assemblywoman Amy Pollan, who represents the Edgemont section in town, to meet with us, but she has failed to respond to our overtures, even though the request was made by one of her constituents. We were finally granted audiences with Senator Stewart-Cousins and Assemblywoman Shinsky at the end of February and early March, at which time we were informed that a study would be conducted by Pace University staff that was expected to be completed by the end of March. The study could then provide a framework for crafting legislation that would be fair to the entire state. We ended March all around. We didn't hear back about the completion of the study. And we were patient because the legislature at that time was struggling with the passage of the state budget. But once again this year, the budget didn't pass on time. Moving forward, we invited our legislators to speak at our first community meeting, which was held on April 27th at Price Temple Church, which they did. During that meeting, they both pledged to work on our path. On May 1st, after the budget is passed, we again asked our legislators to meet, but a follow-up meeting still has not been filled. However, on June 5th, within the week prior to the closing of the legislature, a Senate bill was introduced by Senator Stewart-Cousins and sent to the Senate Laws Committee. Two days later, on June 7th, after we pressured them, the corresponding Assembly bill was introduced by Assemblyman Fred Deals and referred to the Local Governments Committee. A third bill is also introduced by Senator Fred Scoofus, which had some changes but not nearly as comprehensive as what we received. Miraculously, these bills were passed on the final day of the legislative session and are now waiting to be sent to the governor for signing them to law. We still have not heard that they have been forwarded to the governor as of this morning. Why did it take two months to introduce the bills, knowing that an incorporation petition was poised to be filed? Why weren't they introduced before the last week of the legislature? We'll never know. I'd like to ask Mike Schwartz to just briefly go over the legislative bills that are announced and that we're hoping will get signed tomorrow.
So the way the legislature works, there's just that there is a Senate, just that there is House of Representatives federally and a state, there's a state senate and there's a state assembly. And each of them is separate, but they work together. And in order for a bill to pass, it has to pass through both. And after it passes through both of these bodies, the governor of New York then signs it into law or it doesn't. And that's the process. It's simple. It's American, it's democracy, it's everything that we know. So in this case, we had a couple of situations. It gives you some perspective. Of course, New York State, there were three different counties over the last five years that had the issues around the incorporation question. One of them was out in Suffolk County, where East Hampton was attempting to secede from other parts of the, it was like the uber rich trying to secede from the very rich. And that eventually was swept. And then up in Orange County, there's a group of Orthodox Satmar Jews, about 600 people, who were attempting to become a village of their own next to a 40,000 member Orthodox Jewish community called Kiras Joel. And for them, it was an interesting question. Their state senator, James Scoofus, had his own bill. So now we have the Scoofus bill. Talk about that first. Scoofus bill only wanted to accomplish one thing. They wanted to increase the number of people required to form a village so that this 600 member group would not be eligible. So in Scoofus's bill, that 600, well, the number is 500 now, 500 numbers turn to 2,000. So Scoofus is taken care of, Fred Steele is taken care of in Suffolk County. Who else is left? Only us in New York State. There's nobody else looking at incorporation other than the town of Greenberg. Scoofus's bill allows for two things, increase it to 2,000, and that the incorporators have to add to their petition a set of fiscal reports, one about what the village will look like, where it gets its services and their costs, and what capital and operating budget will look like prospectively for this new village, and also do one, the same type of report for the remaining, in our case, unincorporated town of Greenberg. It's something, but it's almost nothing because it's not vetted report. It doesn't make a difference what the outcome is. If the report shows that everybody is devastated and that nobody can live here anymore, it doesn't stop the incorporation. The bill from Senator Cousins, we thought was an excellent bill. And that bill did a bunch of things. First, it answered, it responded to all of the suggestions from the study which was the done in case. And it does the following. It takes the decision made about the petition away from the town supervisor, Paul Finer, who's been involved in this kind of struggle for seven years. This will be the third petition that's about to come out. So the first one is it takes it away and sets up a three-person commission. And the three-person commission is appointed by the Secretary of State and Controller and Attorney General. Each person will hopefully have excellent credentials. And that group would do a number of things. Firstly, would look at the petition and at these financial reports and say, hey, they're real or they're bogus. And they also would allow for funding for an outside financial report that would be vetted and audited so that people like me in Edgemont wouldn't have to wait 90 days until after we vote to find out where our services are coming from, their cost, and their level. It would also give people like me in Edgemont an opportunity to see how badly incorporation would affect my neighbors in the balance of unincorporated Greenberg. Because maybe that would make a difference to me, and it clearly does. So that's a beautiful thing. But the committee also had the right to say at the very end, this commission, this is bad. You can't go forward. And that's a law we like a lot. However, in this case, our elected officials failed us because they put together this, what we think is strong start. And they exempted the town of Greenberg from the law. And then on the floor of the Senate, Amy Pollan, who represents Edgemont, I'm sorry, Assembly, Amy Pollan represents Edgemont, disclosed that she had a side letter and an agreement between she, Senator Cousins, and Assemblyman Hasting to allow the exemption of Edgemont from the law forever. So this is what we're all upset about. Carol said, well, why did this legislation occur in the last few days? Why didn't it occur a few weeks earlier? For us, we've been testing for this legislation for seven years, anything to make it fair, but it hasn't occurred. Also, part of Senator Cousins's bill was a real study, a big study, $100,000 she put aside. was a real study, a big study, a hundred thousand dollars she put aside to study the whole issue of incorporation. What happens to the town's self-services? What prices could be at? Do people like you have the right to vote? Should people like you be required to sign a certain number of petitions? Again, all of that is an excellent start to dealing with a problem that we've been dealing with for seven years here. And in, in other, in other areas, like in Massaic, Long Island, where they incorporated, they had a comeback again because they failed. Those situations would not have occurred. So this is where we're at. The current law is not equitable. The new laws are only written for us because nobody else wants to incorporate. And we're exempted from it. How does anybody understand? Any questions? Let me just add one more small, I apologize. Let me add one more small point that allows him to push. One of the things that occurs as well is we're out of session now and the legislature doesn't come back again until January. If Senator Cousins or Assemblyperson Shewski at least brought the current bill to the governor and had signed prior to Edgemont, submitting a petition, which they have not done, at least Edgemont would be responsible to follow the Scoofus legislation, which knows you have to get it up like this. So if nothing else, at least a piece of paper with some information would come to everybody who lives in Edgemont. And a piece of paper with information, whether it's verified or true or not, would come to everybody in the unincorporated town. However, for whatever reason, there's no law that says it has to be done. And our elected officials picked ended up in December, ensuring that the people who are incorporating have as much time as they want to get their petition. So we're asking again, and we continue to ask our elected official, if nothing else, send the law up to the governor, get it signed, at least give us a little bit of information. Question, I'm sorry, again later?
Hold the mic closer.
Okay.
Yeah.
It seems like all of the issues that are now amazing. Well, uh, why do all of the incorporated communities in Greenberg? Just Edgemont, except that they're already incorporated, it's not. But in terms of fairness, representation, fiscal issues, why are we not supporting legislation that is disincorporated? This, this is a hundred and fifty years old, this whole notion of incorporation, five and a different five. Why are we not proposing a supportive legislation that would abolish all of the incorporated villages and not the entire town, but the one?
So the, the gentleman asked, why are we not considering uh, new legislation that would abolish all of the incorporated town, uh, villages and make the budget for the town one? We, we can't, we, we would never, uh, be allowed to do that. Every village sees itself as distinct and special. Each of them, uh, considers it, uh, extremely important and critical for them to be in control of their own.
That's what Edgemont said.
Lives. And the, but they exist. And they're not posing any situation. One has to understand that the villages existed before the unincorporated town. They've been there for, just as you said, the gentleman said, for a hundred fifty years. Go to Don's theory, they have a beautiful pool. They have ballfields. Go to Hastings and see the park by the river. They have their own libraries. They have police headquarters, they have their own police. They have their own DPW. They have their own EMS services. They have everything. Edgemont will walk in without one structure, without one building, without one dollar in reserve. It's all in their world. Any other questions?
Pollan, I, I would also like, I would also like to mention the process of disincorporation is massive. Uh, that just happened in, uh, I think Nyack, right across the river. They have to figure out how to absorb all of those services that they have and move toward all the debt that they currently have into the existing village. A, a proposal like that would be fought statewide. And we are a small group of fifteen people. So if you think what we're trying to get done now is difficult, that would be an astronomical task.
Any other questions? Sir?
My understanding, um, of the prior petitions that failed, I think in court, um, of what we're interested in was because, well, partially because the boundaries for the school district and the fire district didn't coincide with what the new, you know, the, the, is that, is that, is that, is that my, is my understanding right? And is that still present in the law?
So let me just, just explain. The gentleman asked, did the first two petitions fail because of not meeting geographical requirements? The answer is partially yes in both of the two situations. But I can tell you quickly what, what occurred. The first petition and the second petition are at the same path. Uh, Paul Finer found them what they call insufficient, which means they didn't meet the standard. They went to the New York State Supreme Court. The same judge looked at both of them. The same judge said, Finer, you're crazy, you're wrong. The town went to the appellate division with this very little politics involved. And it went ahead and in both cases, the appellate division found that the, uh, that the, uh, petitions were again insufficient, didn't meet standard. Both of the cases, geography was an issue. And in the first petition, it was format, who they, uh, what petition looked like, who was, uh, named as town residents. There's not a lot of requirements to become an incorporated village in New York State. And that's why this new law was important. So just to further your question, in the first petition, Edgemont said that the new village of Edgemont would be the Edgemont School District. In the second petition, they said that it would be the Greenberg Fire District. In the third petition, they hired a surveyor, even though we haven't seen it, but they explained it. They hired a surveyor who put together an undetermined new area that's neither the school district nor the Greenberg Fire District, but nobody will see it. It's not been disclosed to the community. Have you seen it in Edgemont? No, it hasn't been disclosed to the Edgemont community. So I don't know what it will be. Um, but again, Supervisor Finer will take a look at the petition and make a determination on whether it's sufficient or not. And then move through the courts if it's not. And then if it will pass and it is sufficient, then very shortly thereafter, Edgemont will vote. The guess is the turnout will be almost nobody. And Edgemont will become a village. And we will not know what the fate is for the balance of the unincorporated town of Greenberg for a hundred and twenty days after the vote. When someone determines what services they're willing to buy from, from Greenberg. Any other questions? Sir?
All right. I'm, I'm not as familiar as perhaps I should be, uh, with affordable housing. If, uh, if, are affordable housing requirements, uh, implemented at a countywide level or a countywide level for a village? If they're implemented at a village level, then is there an affordable housing requirement for a new village?
So I, I, the question is, will there be affordable housing requirements for new villages? I think the question is, uh, is, is a little, uh, the answer a little more obvious. I don't think that it's very specific. But understand that in Dronmore, which is next to the Greenberg Nature Center, they're now building a, you know, middle income supported housing building now. I don't remember the number of years, thirty-eight, I think, or forty-eight or something like that. And that may or may not fulfill the requirements. You'd have to ask somebody from the planning board what those requirements are.
To my understanding, uh, Bishop Preston, uh, master of Price Temple Church. And we have to understand the question, will those requirements be implemented in the villages? Is right now, as, and, and I think, uh, commissioner for public housing and affordable housing in Greenberg. But right now, those, uh, requirements has been abolished by our predecessor at, uh, at the, um, county level. Uh, there was a seven hundred and fifty, um, unit requirement in this. And, uh, Ashterino worked out a deal with HUD to abolish that. And at this particular time, there are no requirements in place. I understand that our present, um, governor is asking, it has not been moved to a point of a requirement. But our governor is asking for that seven hundred and fifty, um, unit requirement to be put back in place. Hopefully that will be implemented and we will be able to get those back in the villages. Not only, um, in Greenberg, but throughout, um, the whole county of Westchester. They were required to, uh, in the villages, seven hundred and fifty units. Ashterino worked out a deal, I call it, so excited. They are not in place at this time. The government is trying to move that back in place. Hopefully it will happen.
Do we have that requirement now? What, the Greenberg, yes, question?
Do we have that requirement?
Yeah, what? Affordable housing?
No, very, as far, as to my knowledge, there, there are no requirements of affordable housing in the town, in the, uh, geographical area of Westchester County. There are no requirements. But the governor, I stated in, the governor is trying to re-implement that requirement.
It should be noted that Bishop, Pastor has been a, Bishop, um, President has been a champion for a public housing and support housing for decades. Um, one of the things that's interesting is that Greenberg out front met its responsibility, but there was a standard. I, I, I don't know if there's a standard now. But Greenberg met its responsibility immediately. And, uh, there have not been any, um, supportive housing units built in Edgemont to this point, or they are building in the long run now. Any questions?
Walter Simon here. I have a. Walter Simon here.
Bring, bring the mic. Wal, Walter, can you, can you, can you speak now?
We're getting a question from the Senate, hold on, please.
Can you speak now, Walter?
Oh, yes, please. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the committee for giving an excellent background information. Uh, a lot of people really do not have a clear understanding of how our, uh, state government operates. So the, yeah, it was an excellent background. I hope that this, uh, presentation would be loaded onto your site. So those individuals who did not have the opportunity to take part will be able to view this session. Uh, my question then is, considering what was said, what is our next step and what is our strategy, uh, going forward?
All right, we heard the question. What is our strategy going forward? We're going to hold off on answering that for a couple of moments, please. Um, first, I would like to recognize Pastor Leroy Richards, who's also a member of our coalition, who has joined us. I would like to recognize our town clerk, Judy Pevill, who has joined us. I would like to ask our county legislator, Jewel Williams Johnson, if she would come forward and say hello to the audience because I want to make sure everybody's familiar with our current legislator, who is very interested in our process.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, I first of all want to sincerely thank all the members of the Coalition, Bishop, everybody. Pastor Richards, everyone here in the, in Carroll, um, for their dedication and, um, understood captioned voices this year. Everyone that lives in here, particularly the unincorporated this section of Greenberg should be more than passionate and interested in this issue because it's going to have devastating effect on all of us. And I would hope that this room would be a bit more supportive. And I know this is one of the main sessions, so, um, that's a hope that we, we continue to have, um, vacation donor and advocacy against the incorporation. I've lived in Greenberg the majority of my life. I moved up here from Queens. When I was only to the fourth grade at Old Town Town Road School, which is now, uh, town of the province, like, top, complex. So, um, it's home for me. It is near, and here, trying to help as much as I can. Um, it, um, as succeeding my mother on the, um, County Board of Legislators, uh, in the Lord and Jewish world in Gary, not, I don't know, I guess, because, um, you know, she's also very much a activist and she provided here to make sure that everyone in Greenberg is represented fair. And I would say that one of the aspects that, um, I've listened to Bishop and Pastor talk about is the fairness of everyone voting, having a vote on the issue. And I've read the Rockefeller Report and other case studies and I've come around to understand that the un, the unaffected, the unaffected portion, which is, we, this is very much affected. But everyone within this town should have a right to vote on this, not just the residents of Edgemont. And, um, so that will, yeah, my wheels turning, and we've been, um, looking at other avenues too. But I just encourage you all, um, to leave here today. You know, want to talk to your neighbors, talk to everyone in the city, because those changes that are a lot hard to get, you probably have been in the summer. And make them aware of this even issue, not to put, put on, place on the back burner that it needs to be very front of mind. And to come out to the next, uh, plane, uh, which will be very soon, but, uh, so please come out and get involved and make a voice to Greenberg because the louder voices means there are more advocates, means that it's more concerned and can make, uh, huge difference. Um, there was one other thing I wanted to say. Oh. As far as affordable housing, um, so yes, the county had, HUD had a huge case against the county for affordable housing. Black community in all municipalities within the country. Um, I'm not sure about the deal. I'm here speaking to Bishop Preston, but I do know that towards the end of Ashterino's, uh, tenure, that the county did in fact meet their requirement. With our new county executive George Lattimer, we have, there's been millions of dollars placed, over forty million dollars to purchase property and, and for development. I think it's split, uh, twenty for purchasing, twenty million for development. So the county is working extremely hard to ensure and maintain and increase the diversity in our community. And I understand there's a learning curve between what is affordable housing or, um, um, middle income housing, workforce housing, but that, that, that's a learning curve that we should all look into and be aware of. And perhaps we, you know, once this is settled and resolved, maybe we should have some education sessions. Because when people hear affordable housing, they start again. And that, in order to, um, from her speaking around this, just about, what, twenty minutes ago, this big board shot down purely for passion. But in order to maintain the quality of life in the community. But in order to maintain the positive life in the communities that we aspire to be to, we need a diverse, uh, community. And that includes affordable housing, workforce housing. And we know that our senior citizens, not only our young townspeople who live here, but our senior citizens, senior citizens, can't afford to stay here. And more and more far is not. So, um, again, I can't say enough, please, um, communicate with your neighbors and friends and make them aware of this issue and please be supportive, be dedicated. Community members have done, um, go on, they can farm, you know, thank you very much. And if you ever have any questions, please contact one of us. It's always open, always available. And it's listening, good suggestions, can they help, same time, Walter.
Um, yeah, I, I, I'd like to know, uh, what, if the county can do anything in helping us move this legislation, uh, forward. Uh, maybe by a resolution, countywide level, or some kind of a message that goes to the state, uh, to ask for, for this to be acted on and move forward.
Repeat that question, please.
Sure. So the question is, what, uh, can be done on the county level to motivate and, uh, uh, support moving the legislation along? Um, you should know that I am in very close contact, you know, constantly with the Senator, Senator, I'm his cousin. Both, um, county legislator David Humble, who represents the Edgemont and the villages of Greenberg, are concerned, you're both very concerned about this and have been speaking to you on a legislative basis. I can write a letter, we can write a letter in support of, um, the legislation that, that's a well framework. Uh, but, but it all it'll do is reiterate what you said, where, and last, so, uh, many, many times. And, and, uh, she's aware and agrees. And, and she thought, don't, don't think it was an easy chore of getting this legislation passed. You know, people fighting her any step of the way. And she's worked very hard to ensure that this, uh, um, but if, but just to have, like, you show that no record, I'm more than happy to do that.
I know yours, I.
I don't know, but I can speak to my colleagues about the countywide decision and I'll, I will do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. You have a question?
Well, I'd just like to say that we've been joined by Tom Ammann.
Okay, we have with us our former Assemblyman, Tom Ammann, who is an expert on passive legislation. So we asked him to speak with us today. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to join you. Um, I was a longtime resident of Greenberg. I'm not anymore. I actually moved because, uh, I needed to move to a school district to take care of my son with special needs. And the school district here was not doing that. And we had some conversations with the school board about that. Now that I'm not a dependent on that school district, I can, uh, talk to the school board and tell them exactly what they need to, to do to solve the problem. As I ended as chairman of the Committee on People with Disabilities in Albany, I become very familiar with it. Let's have a conversation afterwards and, uh, talk a little bit about how to improve things there. Let me start off by saying, just a little more than a hundred and twenty-five years ago, um, May eighteen, eighteen ninety-six, the United States Supreme Court in Plessy versus Ferguson approved it as separate but equal. One year later, one year later, the New York State Legislature passed the Village Cooperation Act, which allows basically for separate. Whether it results in equal is no question, but it allows for separate. And it looks like the current Supreme Court is going back in that direction, unfortunately. So we need to rely on our state legislature to solve the problems that we face. We're not going to get help from the United States Supreme Court doing away with affirmative action. Although affirmative action did solve every problem. I mean, we have a prime fan who prefers affirmative action sitting on the United States Supreme Court today. Because this time, he didn't learn anything, did he? He didn't learn that when you give people an opportunity, they succeed. At any rate, so we're dealing here with a village law that's hundred and twenty-five years old. It's really a remnant of the past. Take a good look at it. It allows the landowners to vote. And what's the impact if we don't change it? The impact is that Edgemont will join the other six villages. Now, someone asked, why not do away with the other six villages? Governor Andrew Cuomo tried to move in that direction. He offered money, he offered help. Nobody except, I think it was Edgemont, uh, uh, Mayak decided to do that. Uh, I think it was one of state villages that also disincorporated. But there's still a movement around the state to separate and form your own village. So we identified this issue many, many years ago. Edgemont was, kind of brought it to my attention. But when I looked at it, it was a village out in Long Island that got incorporated and then failed. And now they're left with all these debts and they don't know who's gonna pay for it. So there was a great need for a revision of the village law. Let's put this in context. If you take a look at what else the legislature has done, one of the accomplishments was the John L. Lewis Voting Rights Act, which empowers the courts in the state of New York to look to see if the actions through elections are having a disparate impact on minority groups. I personally believe that one of the things that this group ought to consider is involving the NAACP and the ACLU, NYCLU, um, in reviewing whether any incorporation would violate the John L. Lewis Voting Rights Act. The other villages have been around for a hundred years. The last village to incorporate was Elsford, more than a hundred years ago. And the town of Greenberg has planned very carefully for the entire town. Edgemont had certain types of development that they wanted in their community. And the town board over the years was accommodating. There were needs for certain types of services in the Fairview section. The town board was accommodating. So the unincorporated area is like one big village. And to take part of it out rips apart that family that has developed over the years. You know, we're in this beautiful building paid for by the unincorporated area. If you take away twenty-five percent of the taxes, twenty-five percent of the revenues, basically, of the town Greenberg, what happens to this library? We've had a lot of talk about, uh, the Fairview Community Center, the town park. It's not just those services, it's all of the services. How does the remaining area pay for this library? And there's a countywide arrangement that I was part of, George Lattimer was, met Andrea Cousins, who were county legislators in Brooklyn. We supported a library system so that everyone can use every library. And the local people pay for that library. Well, if you diminish the number of local people paying for our portion of the library, you're putting a very, very significant burden on people for the unincorporated area, everyone left. So there are very many significant impacts. Um, and that, in that case, would have a major disparate impact if Edgemont were to leave on the rest of the community. The second thing that I'd like to look at is Greenberg itself. I was just referring to the library, but you know, Greenberg is a unique town. As far as I can tell, it is the only town in the state of New York that is allowed to have separate facilities paid for by the unincorporated area. Why? Because way back in nineteen seventy-nine, when I first got elected to the town of Greenberg Town Board, a guy named Tony Veteran recognized that the unincorporated area wasn't being served, wasn't getting the services. Actually, it was, was probably more like seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six. When I got on the town board, they finally figured out a way to solve the problem. And they got Assembly Member Bill Fitterin to pass what has become known as the Fitterin Law, which is the only law that I know for the state of New York that allows a town to have separate services paid for by the unincorporated area of the town. Think back for a moment. You hear from some of the proposed incorporators of Edgemont, well, we'll work this out somehow. Maybe some of the costs would be spread to the, to the villages, et cetera, et cetera. No, that's not gonna happen. It didn't happen in nineteen eighty and that's why we got the Fitterin Law. Because Tony Veteran said to everybody, how about if we do townwide services? How about if we build a pool? How about if we do this? All of the villagers said, we got our own facilities. We're paying for them ourselves. We don't pay twice. So they passed a law that gave the town of Greenberg permission to set up separate services for the forty-five thousand people now who live in the unincorporated area. Now, maybe unincorporated area should be a village. The policies that I made and one piece of legislation that I put out there was to allow the unincorporated area to become a village. Present law does not allow that, and the bill that was just passed doesn't solve that problem. It doesn't allow. It says you have to have a, if you're gonna propose a village, it's gotta coincide with another district existing. Like a school district or a fire district or something. There is no unincorporated area-wide district. And it seems to me, if you're talking about changing the law, you should allow the unincorporated area to be a village. One big village. But you know, splitting up is really not a good idea. That would be a stopgap measure. That would be a second alternative. But we're really in this together. And if you want to move forward, the idea of doing away with villages, that's something that should be looked at, but it's never gonna happen. I mean, you, you got your villages, they won't even share the Department of Public Works or Police Department. They certainly don't want to unincorporate. So we've got a unique circumstance here, affected by an ancient law that was basically based on the concept of separate but equal way back when. And so now what do we do about it? Well, there's lots of differences. Somebody referred to the Rockefeller Report. As you guys know, with your help, we put in all kinds of legislation to allow everyone who's affected to vote. Okay? That's not in this new legislation. What does this new legislation do? It says they're gonna set up a commission that's gonna study the ideas that we put forward in legislation. That everyone vote, have a professional review of the, uh, of the proposals. They are like a controller, they have a separate board, um, let the town board have some impact on this, assess it and weigh the impacts on all of the, of those affected. The question I have is, what happened here? Why is there little afterthought in this pretty good legislation? Was that a mistake that they left the protections out for Greenberg? Or was it a betrayal? And I'm asking that question very seriously. Did our legislators betray us? The motivation for this legislation has been long coming. But Edgemont is the, the face of it right now. As far as I know, it is the only place in the state of New York where our petitions circulate. Okay? I believe that there is already a petition accepted in Orange County. So they could have, if, if they wanted to exclude something that's already happened and now in the courts, they could have done it that way. Why would you say that if there are petitions on the street, then you're excluded? That was clearly drafted to shaft Greenberg and to help the corporators of Edgemont. So I would ask the leaders in the legislature, was this a mistake? Was this poor drafting? Or was this an intentional betrayal of the town of Greenberg? Now, some of the other issues that came up on the affordable housing, I was on the Board of Legislators when we were sued by, um, the federal government for a lack of affordable housing in the state. And it's very complicated. I'm not gonna get into the whole thing, but somebody asked the question of those affordable housing requirements applied to villages. Edgemont, whether they have affordable housing or not can be debated, but they were excluded from scrutiny because they were part of the town of Greenberg, which has plenty of affordable housing. And you see now what happens. We told them way back when, drop this idea. Because if you become a village, you think you're gonna save money, you're not. You're gonna be subject to all kinds of lawsuits. And the Drawmore Road lawsuit is a perfect example. Imagine if that was, had to be defended by the village of Edgemont. How much would the legal fees be? What would be the damages? Read the decision by the court in that case. Decision against the town of Greenberg and the millions of dollars the town paid were because, and the judge said this, the town board was bending over backwards to do what Edgemont wanted. So if that was a village that had to defend that, it would have been the village of Edgemont that would have had to pay those millions of dollars and would have been, uh, attacked by the judge. And has there been a thank you from Edgemont to the town board for taking the heat on this? No, all they do is continue attack. But that's what happened there. And the, um, well, I won't move on any further with that, but yes, the village of Edgemont, if it ever got formed, would be scrutinized and you know that we'd have lawsuits brought about discrimination, disparate impact, et cetera. What do you do? Well, somebody said, we should get this legislation passed. I want to suggest to you that the legislation that has been passed should not be signed by the governor. It excludes Edgemont. Why would you want it passed? Now, what you could do is ask the governor to insist that before she signs it, it be amended. There is a process called chapter amendments. And the, I mean, I've had it many times. You pass good legislation and the governor says, you know, that's a little too expensive the way you've done it. I like the idea. I'll sign it, but. Okay? I want to promise back that on January one, you were going to pass what's called a chapter amendment. So she signs the bill, it becomes a chapter of law, and then it gets amended. Go look at the first two weeks of this year's legislative session. All they did was pass chapter amendments. Maybe not all, but basically what they did was pass chapter amendments, one right after the other. In fact, I passed a piece of legislation, the Senate approver, which, uh, modified, uh, several parts of a piece of legislation that Cuomo insisted on. We made it better, we made it better, we made it better. And then all of the amendments that we had put in were about to lapse. So we put in a major reform legislation. And the governor came back and said, you know what? The stuff you've already passed, I can live with. But I can't live with the new reforms. I want to study this issue first. So she signed the bill. And for two months, the law was the way we wanted it. And then in January, the head of the Health Committee, Eric Poland, carried the quote, "chapter amendment" and brought it back to where it was before. It's convoluted. People don't really understand this process. But the end result was, we were able to continue all of the reforms we had made up to that point because the governor agreed, yes, that's a good idea, but I don't want these loose things that you put in. But no, I'm not gonna veto the bill and have everything lapse. I'm gonna sign the bill the way you sent it to me, but I need you to promise to change it the way I want it changed. That's called a chapter amendment. So you could be in favor of the legislation that was passed, but insist that it be amended to delete that last portion that exempts Edgemont from the bill. I'm not gonna analyze the whole bill. It's not the perfect bill, but you know, it's a good bill. It moves in the right direction. It moves in the right direction. Uh, but you can't say we support it if it's gonna exclude Edgemont because there'll be no pressure. You'll have no allies anywhere in the state to do this if this legislation is passed. They will have addressed the issue. Wouldn't have solved the problem, but they would have, quote, "addressed the issue." And how many times have you been told by politicians, oh, we've addressed that issue already? We don't have bandwidth to do it again for another five or ten years. And by then, you'll be in court on, on, on the Edgemont, uh, circumstance. Um, I think that's all I want to say at this point. Thank you for giving me a chance to, uh, continue to participate in this. Uh, Greenberg was my home for thirty-five years. Um, I was very pleased to represent you on the town board as a county legislator and as an assembly member. I was counsel to Greenberg Housing Authority. Uh, I represented the village of Dobbs Ferry and, and Arslay as their prosecutor. So my heart is here in Greenberg. And so I'm gonna continue to fight with you. And so I'm gonna continue to fight with you, and we're gonna win this fight. Thank you.
Okay, I promised that this meeting would be only an hour, and we have had that time, Mark. Are there any other questions? Well, Mr. Abnanti did in fact address that we, the next step is for us to continue to let our legislators know that we are not happy with the outcome of the legislation in its current format and that we expect them to fix it so that they are not continuing to betray the people that elected them to office. We have copies of their addresses, phone numbers, and emails at the back table. If you did not pick one up on your way in, feel free to pick one up on the way out. Don't be afraid to contact your legislators and let them know what you think. They are simple human beings, just like we are. If you want to work with us, we would appreciate it. We need all the help we can get circulating the words throughout the community. We are in mass resuscitation, we don't have any money to work with, so it's basically word now from emails that we send out. So thank you very, very much for coming today. Yes, these sessions are recorded, they are available on the website of YouTube, Christ Temple. We have not set up our own website because our group does not have the technology to do that. We can forward those links to you if you would like us to do that. All right? And anyone who has them can feel free to circulate them throughout the community. If you get an email from us, please forward it to your family and friends. And I thank you all very, very much for coming out today, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. Have a good day.